Oh, man.
Because it's just like she goes full steam.
Excuse me, somebody has an open microphone? Please check your microphone.
And they were so close.
Hold on, hold on.
I do see, this is Margie Balkan speaking. I do see that we have a quorum. So at 5:30, unless the chancellor has a reason to postpone, I will begin promptly at 5:30. Very good. The September 20th, 2021 Board of Trustees Special Meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 5:30. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953 and Governor Newsom's Executive Order N2920. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members and others who are participating via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted with the exception of the board members and the chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. And the district will also make the recording available on the YCCD YouTube channel for 30 days in accordance with our board policy. As a reminder, board members are asked to use the raised hand feature via Zoom when they wish to speak. And everyone is encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested public comments be submitted in advance of the board meeting by email. And written public comments were provided to the Board of Trustees in advance of this meeting. Persons seeking to make an in-real-time public comment may do so at the time of the agenda item and are asked to use the raised hand feature in Zoom. At this time, I'll move to 2.2, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise to observe the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll go now to 2.3, which is roll call is to establish a quorum. I'll ask the board's stenographer to conduct the roll call.
Thank you, both trustees. In addition to confirming that you are present, I'll ask that trustees also respond to the three questions lifted in the agenda, which were, and you hear me well, was able to hear proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Present, I can hear you. And I do not have a copy of the agenda. I'm in my car.
Trustee, I can laugh.
Present and yes to all three questions.
Trustee, ready?
Present, and I am looking at the agenda. I have read it, but I do not have it in front of me.
Okay, if you've read it or have looked at it or received it.
Oh, yeah, I have.
I also read it.
Okay, thank you for that confirmation, trustee. Vice Chair Garrett?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Richard?
Here, yes, all three.
Trustee Nicolau?
Present and yes to all three.
Present and yes to all three. Thank you. We will move now to item C, which means 3.1, Public Comment Instruction. And I think we have a PowerPoint to help me narrate how this works. And I am hearing a little bit of audio feedback. I'm not sure why. Very good. So we can get the PowerPoint displayed, is that right, Graciela? Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, okay, good. I'm waiting for, moving on to 3.1. I thought we had a PowerPoint that would help me navigate this for the public to see. If I could have someone from the, there we go. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, very good. Advance the slide. We wanted to use 3.1, this item, to talk to the public about how we will administer public comment on item 3.2, Health and Safety. Persons who wanted to comment on this item were invited to submit comments via email to the board recorder at boardpubliccomment@yosemite.edu by 4:00 PM. Comments were limited to 300 words or less, and all comments were submitted to the board members prior to the start of the meeting. I think we're still assembling all of those comments, but rest assured that the board will get copies of everything that was emailed to the board related to 3.2. So as of 4:00 PM today, the deadline to submit written comments, if the board's stenographer could just report out what's the number that we've received in favor and the number we've received opposed in written public comments? Is the stenographer able to report that?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
So the cons, there were 22. And the pros were 42.
Very good. All written comments received become a part of the permanent agenda. And we'll be sure that the board members receive all of those public comments sometime during the meeting or shortly after the meeting. Advance the slide, please.
Chair Balkan, they were sent via email, so the board should have them. I can check my emails to make sure.
Oh, very good. I just haven't checked, getting ready for, so, yeah, I trust you. So, okay. And then the way we will handle in-real-time public comment is that during the meeting, persons who wish to comment will be given the opportunity to do so by me. Following the call for in-real-time public comments, persons will be asked to use the electronic raised hand feature in Zoom to signal a public comment request. And I already see that many people have done that. And for persons participating via phone who don't have Zoom, are asked to press the star nine to stimulate a raised hand feature. And the district will acknowledge that they see your raised hand. Then I will ask the stenographer, as we go along, to introduce each person individually. And we'll also remind them to unmute their audio when it's their turn to speak. And those people using a phone will have to press star six. At the conclusion of each public comment, the person will be returned to the mute status. Members of the public seeking to provide us with public comment were instructed at the beginning of this meeting, so if you're just signing on and you didn't see that, we're asking you to identify your name by simply putting pro or con in front of it. The only reason to do that is to help this meeting along so that we are giving equal weight back and forth to this question. So please, it will make the meeting go quicker and smoother and more efficiently. If you'll do that right now, should you think that you wish to speak during public comment? Next slide. In accordance with our policy 2350, time limits per speaker may be shortened and/or a maximum time allotment for public comment may be imposed by the chair. If a large number of people wish to address the topic, the board chair requests that speakers identify themselves as for against or proposed action so speakers can be alternated during pro and con. So our board policy supports this efficiency rule that we're implementing tonight. The board will exercise the pro-con speakers alternating and will be limited to three minutes. And we will use a timer displayed using V-Lock so that everyone will be able to see the timer. And I wasn't sure if, Graciela, were you going to show a sample of that or we'll just carry on?
Maybe we can just carry on. I think that'll be very.
Yeah, I think it'll be very obvious. And a period of two hours have been allocated for public comments unless otherwise determined by the chair. And I'll determine that as we get closer to 7:30. Next slide. Another reminder that this is the desire of the board to seek public comment. There is no proposed action for this meeting tonight strictly to hear what the public has to share with us on this topic. Next slide. So as a review, this is the last slide. The board chair or stenographer will facilitate the public comments and exercise the pro-con speakers. So if I don't call on you, trust me that Graciela is working behind the scenes with me to make sure we're calling on people alternating. And members of the public will be called individually. Speakers are given three minutes to provide their comment and will be using a timer. And no board action will be taken tonight. Very good. So I think that's the end of our slides to review that item. And are there any questions from our trustees before we proceed to item 3.2? And I can't see you. So if you don't speak up, I'll just assume we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on. And we're going now to 3.2, which is the item that we are all here for tonight. And we're seeking input from the public regarding implementing a requirement that faculty, staff, and students who are accessing campus facilities at any Yosemite Community College District location to be immunized against SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, or agree to be tested weekly to provide a negative COVID test. Again, that's particularly and expressly for those wishing to access campus facilities. And in accordance with our policy, time limits per speaker may be shortened, which we've done. And I won't reread that because you've heard my explanation. And no board action will be taken this evening. So with that, I am going to jump right into facilitating our first comments here. And I see already that we have 146 people listening in. That's terrific. I hope that we get more. And Graciela, go ahead.
We have a question for raised hand by trustee Richards.
Oh, yes, go ahead, trustee Richards. I couldn't see you. Go ahead.
Didn't hear any exception made for religious convictions.
Right, that's the law. Because that's the law. There would be an exception for religious and/or medical exemption. That's the law. So we don't have a right to determine that. The law already did that for us. So that's a great question. That's a great, great question. Very good. Okay, Graciela, can we begin the rotation?
I think as I'm seeing on the various screens that we have just from, I am going to use my lifting, the raised hands, so that we can stick to one computer in one order.
Very good.
The first raised hand I have is from Health Tech, which is a four, from Dr. Vicky Trask. If I can ask you to unmute yourself and share your video, I will come in and.
Very good. Welcome, Vicky. We're waiting for you to unmute and we'll begin the three-minute clock. They're very good. Welcome, Vicky.
I'm unmuting myself right now.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Chancellor Young. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Dr. Vicky Mulvaney Trask. I am the Dean of Workforce Development and Lifelong Learning. I am speaking as a member of the Leadership Team and Advisory Council and also representing the Leadership Team, which is overwhelmingly voted in favor of vaccination and mandates for students and employees at YCCD. I provided earlier today a copy of the resolution. So you have the whole resolution intact. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the things because of sake of time. The Leadership Team Resolution supporting the COVID-19 vaccination mandate is, whereas the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees is committed to providing a safe and healthy workplace and an academic environment for the entire YCCD community. And then another one I'd like to read here is, whereas there recently been a surge in the number of COVID-19 infections due to the Delta variant, which is highly transmittable and a variant of the COVID-19 virus. And then I'd like to read another one. Whereas the Delta variant is currently increasing infections rates among those individuals who are vaccinated. Another one I'd like to read is, whereas the YCCD is one of only the three community college districts in the Central Valley from Bakersfield up through Sacramento that has not yet approved a vaccine mandate for students and employees. Lastly, with 88% of our leadership team members participating, 73% of our leadership team supports that the YCCD Board of Trustees approve a vaccination mandate for all students and for all employees. Of that survey, we had a total, like I said before, the leadership team, there was one as far as the total numbers was outlined on the resolution that I provided for you. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Yosemite College District Board of Trustees give due consideration to the request of the Leadership Team and Advisory Council under the YCCD Constitution groups to approving the vaccination mandate that requires all students and all employees on campus to either show proof of COVID-19 vaccination or undergo weekly testing. Thank you for your time in listening to my resolution from the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trask. And if I can ask you to, you can raise or put your hand down just so that we don't confuse you with a new speaker. And let's move on to our next speaker.
I will call on Con Lynda Brusinski. If you can unmute yourself and share your video.
All right.
Welcome, welcome, Lynda. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members and concerned attendees. I had written a letter detailing an experience I had during my daughter's stay at the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit at Stanford Medical Center years ago, but it's too long for this format. So the lessons I wish to stress from that experience are the importance of a control group for scientific advancement and the importance of making one's own medical decisions. So despite the seriousness of COVID, most would agree that a future pandemic could be worse. It's essential that we learn as much as we can about the robustness and duration of the immune responses elicited by these vaccines developed with new technologies. While it would not be ethical to withhold vaccine and force people to be in a control group, it's in the interest of science to let those who do not wish to be vaccinated remain as they are. It's also important to maintain a group that has only had the immune response to the virus itself and not the vaccine. The separation of the population into groups of vaccinated and unvaccinated makes sense from a political standpoint, but immunologically, it would make more sense to separate into a group that has immunity and one that doesn't have immunity. The emphasis on the former categorization belies the claim of a policy based on science. I'm a firm believer that a person should be responsible for their own health and medical decisions. Each individual has their own risk factors, family medical history, lifestyle, and outside considerations.
Have a good evening.
Keeping people informed or trying to persuade them is understandable. Violating the privacy of these decisions or mandating a decision is not. I've heard the argument that other vaccines are mandated in school settings. This, to me, is proof that there should not be a mandate for the COVID-19 vaccine. It's evidence that the specifics of the disease, risks, effects, and population are not being considered. We already forced this, so why not that? It's a sign that we've begun to look at things backwards. We are putting people on the defensive, forcing them to come up with a reason why they have to refuse something, taking the burden off people doing the forcing. This is a dangerous path, one that could eventually lead to the mandate of a medical procedure you do not agree with. Finally, at MJC, we're constantly reminded that many of our students are on the verge of giving up and that we must remove obstacles that might be a hindrance to our student population. A vaccine mandate would be particularly harmful to the student population here at MJC. And the groups that it would harm most are the groups that we most wish to serve. Thank you for your consideration.
Lynda, thank you for taking time to address us. I appreciate it. Let's go to our next public speaker.
At this time, I will call Dr. Erin Lucas, if you can unmute yourself and share your video.
I hope you guys can see me.
Yeah, welcome, Dr. Lucas.
I assume.
We'll start the timer.
Okay, first, I'd like to introduce myself again to some of the people watching that may not know me. I have a PhD in microbiology with an emphasis in infectious disease. And so a part of, you know, my training is heavily involved in immunology and how infectious disease and the immune system kind of play together. And so with that, I want to kind of remind the board and people watching of a couple of things. One, our county's case rates are more than double of what the state average is. And we have, in this county, let this pandemic rage in our community, to the detriment of our community that includes our students, our faculty, our staff, everybody. And I know that there was a student survey sent out recently. Taking student opinion is fine. But I'll remind the board and people watching that students come to us, they come to me specifically, to learn about immunology and infectious diseases. Shouldn't they also lean on us for guidance on vaccine mandates as well? We are currently failing our students. We are failing them by not having them in the classrooms because we can't have them in the classrooms safely. We are failing our community members as well by not being leaders in the community. We are falling behind in vaccinations. And it is appalling that we are one of only a very few number of community colleges that have not already mandated vaccine. Or, and I'll point this out, it is not you absolutely must get vaccinated. It is you get vaccinated or you get tested. It is you get vaccinated or you get tested once a week. So, you know, it's not like we're pinning people down in the old smallpox days. We're saying, hey, if you don't want to get vaccinated, fine, just get tested once a week because we need to get control of this pandemic. To get students safely back in the classroom, we have got to take this step. I know the board and I know a lot of people are worried about our lower enrollments. And to get enrollments back up, we need on-campus instruction. And the only way we can get on-campus instruction safely is by mandating vaccines and also following masking mandates. There is overwhelming evidence that high vaccine rates correlate to low case rates. And so if we want this pandemic to be in our rearview mirror, this is a step that we have to take. This virus is not going anywhere, guys. This is going to be with us for a long time. So unless we want to constantly be pushing the absolute limits of our healthcare system and having students constantly missing class, having constantly to move back to remote, to not being on campus, then we need to take this step. I would love nothing more than to actually have my students in the classroom to learn about microbiology and infectious disease. But I can't right now in a safe manner, so we need to move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Appreciate your willingness to come forward. We'll move on to the next speaker. And if those who have spoken already, just remember to put your hand down so we don't confuse you with new speakers.
If you give me a moment, I want to make sure that I share the sound.
Okay, who's up next?
So the next person on the call list is Michael Turok. You can share your screen on the radio.
Are you there, Michael Turok?
I'm, I'm here.
You are welcome, welcome. We'll start the timer. Go right ahead.
I can't unmute. Oh, there's my video. Sorry. My name is Michael Turok. I teach biology here at Columbia College. I don't have quite the same credentials as Dr. Lucas, but I also teach microbiology here. And I am speaking to you today as someone who has taught microbiology and who has done so face-to-face successfully since the pandemic began. What does a vaccine mandate for COVID hope to accomplish? Will a mandate keep everyone safe and prevent transmission of the virus? According to the CDC, no. COVID vaccines will not prevent transmission of the virus. Vaccines were only intended to reduce the chance of severe illness from COVID for those who received them. Will a vaccine mandate help us reach herd immunity? In part, but not completely. Herd immunity from any pathogen is achieved when a sufficient proportion of the population has acquired immunity to prevent new outbreaks or otherwise interrupt the transmission sequence for that pathogen. Acquired immunity can come both from vaccination or natural recovery from the disease. I myself have already had COVID and recovered from it, so I have natural immunity. Health agencies around the globe are beginning to realize that herd immunity for COVID is unlikely to be achieved through artificial acquired immunity, that is vaccination alone. We will need to increase in natural immunity as well to push us past the threshold for herd immunity with COVID. The virus will continue to mutate no matter what, because that's what viruses do. And eventually, no one with current immunity will be protected either. The good news is that the trend of viral variants is to become more infectious but have a decreased virulence, that is the ability to cause serious disease or death. Do we have funds and staffing resources to effectively roll out such a mandate and deal with all the logistics of administering weekly testing, tracking those results, and communicating all of that to all of our constituencies? This will become and maybe will be multiple people's jobs for the foreseeable future. Could those resources not be better allocated to other projects? For all these reasons, therefore, I think a COVID vaccine mandate is contraindicated. It's ineffective at containing the virus completely. It's potentially discriminatory if unequally applied. It perpetuates and promotes a fear of a virus that has greater than 99% survival rate for those whose immune systems are not compromised and who do not have underlying comorbidities. And I also firmly believe that it is not in the best interest of our students, staff, and faculty. We need to get more people back on campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for your willingness to come speak to the board. Appreciate it. Moving on to our next speaker.
Michael Sunquist Pro.
Welcome, welcome, Michael Sunquist. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I've been a YCCD employee for over 35 years and currently serve as the Dean of Arts, Humanities, and Communications at Modesto Junior College. I support a vaccine mandate for employees and students working and studying on campus for several reasons. And until now, I've always felt that the district put the health and safety of its students and employees above all else. Our campus, our community needs our campus facilities to function as they are designed. This means bringing students back to engage in face-to-face instruction. Yes, many discipline experts have found creative ways to provide instruction via remote modalities. Disciplines like studio art, performing arts, and athletics are best supported by an on-campus engagement. Students not only benefit from the proximity to our instructors, but also thrive on the social nature of studying alongside their peers. Recently, a theater major made a point of stopping me to thank me for bringing theater instruction back to campus. She was having a tough time being isolated at home without the benefit of engaging in a creative project with her friends. This is what I'm concerned about. Students in the creative arts need to collaborate with others. Every month, they confine themselves, they fall a little bit more behind, and the isolation continues to affect their outlook. A vaccine mandate will help everyone feel safer and will motivate engagement in activities on campus. Without a mandate, significant return to campus activities will be slow and will result in fewer students completing their educational goals, fewer students getting certificates, fewer students transferring, fewer students moving into the workforce to support our communities. I urge you to act soon so that access to educational opportunities is not thwarted by the fear of COVID exposure on campus. If you don't act, you will postpone our students' movement through their programs of study. My question is, what makes YCCD special? Delta College, the Los Rios State Center, Contra Costa, Peralta, Yuba, and Kern Community College districts have all established vaccine mandates. Again, what makes YCCD special? Act soon and support the health and safety of the employees and students that rely on your leadership for a safe and productive learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael Sunquist, for your willingness to come speak to us. Next speaker, please.
Catherine Weston.
Hello, Catherine.
Hello, my video, my video was stopped.
We see you, Catherine. We did for a second. Okay, there you are.
Hi, everyone. I'm a little nervous, so.
Okay, no problem. We'll get the timer going right now.
All right. Greetings, everyone, and thank you for taking time to listen to all of us here tonight. Now more than ever, our students need face-to-face instruction without barriers. I'm concerned with the requirement for students to obtain weekly testing if they are not vaccinated for two reasons. The first is that this will provide another hurdle for accessing campus services. And the second is the lack of consideration for students who have contracted COVID but do not wish to be vaccinated. This semester, all of my classes have been in-person. I teach at Columbia College. This is a great improvement for my students because we are able to cover more material efficiently and my students are held accountable and thus more motivated to practice and participate. I'm working with many students who did not pass my class when it was fully online but are now thriving now that it is face-to-face. I believe it is important to keep in mind that many of the students we service are the folks who have been bagging our groceries or preparing our takeout meals. These are jobs that never had the luxury to be conducted over Zoom. Now I feel that it is our responsibility to do everything we can to offer the highest quality instruction to our students with little to no roadblocks. If we must provide weekly testing, then we need to make this hurdle as easy and convenient as possible. Provide rapid tests on site. I've already had students that are not able to come to class because they've been exposed to COVID or have contracted the virus. I'm doing the best I can to keep these students motivated and up to date with my class. I fear that asking them to also provide proof of weekly testing might be the final straw for some of them to show up. When interviewed for my job at Columbia College, I was asked to describe the diversity of Columbia. And I said lower economic status, working-class families, and first-generation college students. I'm one of those students. My folks were working class. I graduated from Columbia College. My parents didn't have a college education. I was the first. They worked really hard to get me to this place. My folks just moved to Idaho. And although those political reasons I might not agree with completely for politics and my dad had epilepsy and wanted better healthcare, I decided that it's just maybe an indication of our student population. We have about 55% vaccination rate. And whether you agree or not, this reflects our student body. If we adopt a policy that discriminates against unvaccinated students, we will not live up to our deep ideals of inclusion and diversity. And I'm running out of time, so there is a recent study that talks about natural immunity. It came out in the Washington Post. I put a link in the letter that I submitted to you all. And there are more studies coming out that look at natural immunity. And I would just urge you to at least consider that. And remember that I think it is important to remember that many of our students who were working during the shutdown and contracted this virus so that we are now very same students.
Thank you, Catherine, for your willingness to come forward. Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Thank you. Before I do, if I can just let those folks know that are in, in a raised hand. If you do not have pro or con, if you can identify that for me and you're renaming yourselves, that will be helpful as we're switching from pro to con. So the next. I don't. Van Haker.
Did I lose audio on Graciela? I think we're looking for a pro speaker to come next.
I wanted two cons. Elizabeth McInnes. Oh, my apologies. Yes. Elizabeth McInnes.
Hi.
Hi, Elizabeth McInnes. Welcome. We'll start the timer right now.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth McInnes and I'm a professor at MJC. And I'm speaking tonight in support of a district-wide SARS-CoV-2 vaccination mandate. I strongly support a mandate because of the following things. These vaccines are a product of years of robust, rigorous peer-reviewed science. I got a lecture on it. If you guys would give me 30 minutes, I got a timeline. I know you don't want to, so I'll continue. These vaccines are highly effective. The Pfizer and Moderna vaccines are 90% protection against severe disease. All FDA-approved and emergency-use authorized vaccines offer substantial protection against hospitalization. These vaccines are holding up to variants like the Delta variant. Areas with low vaccination rates have high rates of COVID-19 disease and death. Stanislaus County's current testing positivity rate is 8.7 and was recently as high as 11.4. What will that be when we get into the winter? I hope it stays low. Currently, 83% of hospitalized COVID patients are unvaccinated. That's in Stanislaus County. 92% of current deaths are due to COVID have been in unvaccinated individuals. Areas with high vaccination rates have low rates of disease. Vaccinating the population of our district will allow us to get back into the classrooms, our labs, and our offices more safely. Vaccination saves lives and reduces the spread of the virus. We can save lives by increasing the numbers of individuals in our community that are vaccinated. The UC and CSU systems have mandated vaccines. These are the institutions that we take pride in transferring the majority of our students to. These institutions have experts actively working in the fields of epidemiology, immunology, and virology who agree with the efficacy and support these vaccines. Many other community colleges are now mandating vaccines. Through the vaccine mandate, we can help to reduce the stress and overload of our healthcare, our local healthcare workers. And vaccine, vaccination, and regular testing is the way out of this pandemic. Let's lead because it's our responsibility to be a model to our community and we can show how to be successful in beating this virus.
Thank you, Elizabeth McInnes. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Suzanne Anker.
Who's up next?
I think it's me.
Suzanne?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not allowing me to unmute my video. Okay.
There you are. Hello, Suzanne. Welcome. We'll start the timer. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm an instructor at MJC and my daughter is a student at MJC. According to a research paper at the National Center for Biotechnical Information, informed consent is the process in which a healthcare provider educates a patient about the risks, benefits, and alternatives to a given procedure or intervention. If you mandate the COVID shot, will MJC Health Services be giving us the risks, benefits, and alternatives? This is what I'd like to know. Will they be telling us about the medications being used successfully to treat COVID? Linda mentioned that her daughter in an ICU at Stanford. Allow me to talk about my daughter, who also was in the ICU at Stanford, to put a face on a student here. When she was two years old, she had a heart transplant. She takes immunosuppressive drugs to prevent organ rejection. Before her transplant at Stanford Medical Center in the intensive care unit, she was given a number of experimental drugs as well as put on an emergency use device from which we got special approval from the FDA. So I am not against innovative medicine if it makes sense to do so. However, we always had informed consent and carefully weighed the risks and benefits. Her transplant team at Stanford, made up of specialists, doctors, and nurses, have told us it is absolutely, completely up to us whether she gets the COVID shot or not. As a contrast, every year, they're very insistent she'd get the flu shot. But this COVID shot is completely up to us. They are not insisting on it. However, you would be requiring or recommending this shot to young people, including my daughter, merely because she wants to continue her education at MJC? You probably want to mandate the shot because you're concerned about students and staff catching COVID on campus, and that's a worthy goal. But allow me to tell you some more information from Stanford. I also asked them about the immune-compromised transplant kids and young people, how they were doing with COVID. At that time, they told me that out of 100 patients who had had COVID, all 100 had recovered, and that was without any vaccine. These are all immune-compromised kids like my daughter. So you may say you don't want students to carry the virus to others on campus. That's a good idea, too. My daughter and I both have had COVID and recovered. We did so at home and needed no medication. We now have natural immunity that is higher than those who've had the shot, according to what I understand. So it makes no sense to us to get an injection, which offers less protection than what our natural immunity already offers, but carries risks of adverse reactions, including heart conditions such as cardiomyopathy, which is the original diagnosis she had as a toddler and for which she needed a heart transplant. As much as I like MJC, I do not think she should risk going through heart failure and another transplant just to attend classes there. You may say instead of getting the shot, we can have weekly testing for COVID. If you do this, we really need to know how I'm able to be cleared from having tuberculosis for four years by merely having a phone call with the MJC nurse and why you never test for the flu. I respectfully ask that you not mandate the shot or testing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne, for your willingness to come speak to us. Appreciate it. Let's move on to our next speaker. And while we're moving on to the next speaker, I noticed we have 10 people still with their hands up. I just want to remind you to, if you haven't done so already, take the time to identify yourself as pro or con so that we can, oh, there's 11 people now, so that we can alternate between speakers. Very good. We're looking for the next pro speaker, I think, is next.
Yes, Dr. Alejandro Sabre.
Hello.
Welcome, Dr. Sabre. Welcome, Dr. Sabre. We'll start the timer right now.
Madam Chair, Chancellor Young and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alejandro Sabre. I've been a full-time professor of music at MJC for twenty-three years. And tonight marks my first appearance before the YCCD Board for public comment. I'm respectfully asking the board to consider implementing what the two systems of higher education in the state of California are currently doing, namely requiring COVID-19 immunization. CSU is the largest four-year public university system in the United States. It has twenty-three campuses, enrolling four hundred and eighty-five thousand students with fifty-six thousand faculty and staff. On the other hand, internationally recognized as one of the best institutions of higher learning, the University of California system currently has ten campuses, two hundred and eighty-five thousand students, twenty-four thousand faculty members, a hundred and forty-three thousand staff members and over two point, uh, two million living along nine. One campus in particular, the UC San Francisco, enrolls only graduate and professional students in the medical and health sciences. Both of these systems of education, of education in our states have concluded that requiring immunizations is the way forward. What I'm trying to say tonight is let's not reinvent the wheel. If it works for them, it should also work for us. On July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, the CSU system published its COVID-19 vaccination interim policy. And I quote, "The California State University is committed to safeguarding the health and wellbeing of students, faculty, staff and administrators. As we work towards a safe resumption of increased on-campus learning, working and other activities, we embrace a comprehensive strategy designed to reduce the likelihood of transmission of the COVID-19 virus." As the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention noted in a recent update, getting vaccinated prevents severe illness, hospitalizations and death. In light of the evidence established to date regarding the effectiveness and safety of available COVID-19 vaccines and in the face of recent increasing infection rates due to many factors, including the Delta variant, the C, the CSU system hereby requires that affected immediately, all individuals who access campus programs must be, uh, must comply with the policy. Students and employees must have received an approved COVID-19 vaccine and code. On July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, through their UC, UCnet online, the UC system published its final policy required COVID-19 vaccinations, which states, and I quote, "For the safety and wellbeing of the entire university campus, the policy will require, with few exceptions, that all students, faculty and staff be vaccinated against COVID-19. Individuals will be required to show proof of vaccination. For campuses, compliance with the policy will be required to two weeks before faculty, staff and students are expected to be on campus for all of them." And like I said before, if it works for the two largest systems of education in our states, I believe it should also work for us. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Sabre. Appreciate your willingness to come forward. Uh, we'll move to our next speaker. Um,
I, I don't have a con, but I would like to check in with uh, Dr. Bandyopadia to speak.
Okay, because we have a, uh, ten participants still with their, we have ten participants still waiting to speak. We're just checking, uh, looking for equal, you know, balance. So um, and we're looking for a con. Do we have someone who wants to speak con? I can't see the, we have twelve people with their hands raised. Before we go to Dr. Bandyopadia, is there someone who wants to speak? I can't, Graciela, I can't hear.
It doesn't appear. It doesn't appear, so, so.
Okay, okay. Let's go to Dr. Bandyopadia and we still have after him twelve more participants with their hands raised. Welcome, Dr. Bandyopadia. Go ahead. We'll start the timer.
Good evening, Trustee Balkan. Good evening, good evening, the Board of Trustees. My comments are based on information gathered from student surveys, balancing the need to provide access to as many students as possible while keeping our employees and students safe and creating an environment for uninterrupted instructional activities. We have conducted two surveys of our students so far. In the survey conducted a few months earlier, sometime in spring, about a third of the students wanted to have on-campus classes. Another third preferred online instruction and the rest were neutral. Either way was fine. Essentially, from the access standpoint, offering fifty percent of the classes online would seem fair based on the survey result. In a more recent survey conducted last week, and I've been a researcher all my life, I have never seen a response like this. In three days, we had more than six thousand responses. About half of the students wanted to have a vaccine mandate for spring. That's fifty-one percent. About two-thirds preferred a testing mandate, sixty-three percent. About forty-one percent say they may go elsewhere if vaccine is mandated. So again, fifty-one percent pro-vaccine, sixty-three percent. Fifty-one, forty-nine is very close, sixty-three percent pro-testing, forty-one percent may go elsewhere. Providing fifty percent of the classes on campus would enable those who want vaccination to be mandated attend such classes, leaving those opposed to vaccine mandate attend classes online. A vaccination mandate is expected to maximize access with minimum negative impact on our students. The only group that may find their access limited are those against vaccination and want to attend hands-on classes only. Staffing will be less difficult if vaccination is mandated. Of course, the testing provision is also there. It's expected that interruption of instructional activities will be reduced significantly if vaccination is mandated, with fewer outbreaks of positive cases, testing, contact tracing and cleaning requirements, as well as the uncomptent costs that would come down because they're expected to be reduced, improving operational efficiencies. If vaccinated students and employees are accessing the campus, social distancing inside classes can be reduced and class sizes can be increased, improving access to critically needed classes in science and career technical education. We have sufficient planning time between now and spring for everyone to get vaccination. As a positive reinforcement, we'll also incentivize students who share vaccination records with us. Based on the operational needs, based on it will provide better access for our students, I would recommend to adopt a vaccination mandate so that we can improve our operational efficiency and continue to offer classes for the students who need us the most. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Bandyopadia, for your uh, information and willingness to speak to the board. We have about uh, twelve people still with their hands raised. I do see that a couple of them haven't indicated they are pro or con. We will come to you at the end so that we can keep uh, this balanced. So we'll go to our next speaker. Who would that be? We have to stop the timer first. Who's the next speaker?
Morgan Moen.
Okay, very good. And well, as soon as Morgan gets on screen, there we go. We'll start the, we'll reset the timer. Uh, welcome, Morgan Moen. Welcome.
Can you hear?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. We'll start.
Great, thank you. Uh, citizens and students should have the right to choose. And we are presented with a forced choice. It has been the case that nearly all of us have been given a vaccine at some point in our life. And as children, we didn't know what they were or what was in them and had to trust others. But there is now a frustration and a distrust for officials and authorities. The decision at hand, the mandating of vaccines, makes sense to me. Excuse my levity here, but yes, people don't like shots. And nobody wants microchips in their brain, but sometimes we have to make sacrifices to help others. I could go on about the reasons to get the vaccine, but the evidence is out there and is overwhelming. Simply, people are safer with vaccines and others they are around are safer with the vaccines. So to all those listening, vaccines are not your enemy. They are not your children's enemy. In fact, there is a strong chance that our wellbeing is because of a vaccine. Videos of kids suffering from whooping cough, pictures of kids in iron lungs, the death rates of measles. It makes me wonder why we haven't done this already, months ago. Vaccines are considered a monumental achievement of science and medicine, heralding a dramatic drop in disease transmission, but now questioned on the basis of some shaky organizations and websites. You, the board, the decision-making body of YCCD, if you aim to be an effective institution, of which I'm alumni, the board should do its part in making our community safer. The logic of allowing for weekly testing is problematic and costly. And I would wonder what liability falls on YCCD if there is a failure to enforce this. YCCD should be a safe place to learn. To forego mandating vaccines puts students at a greater risk. And for what? Some silly, ignorant and fanatical justification under the guise of a choice for citizen sovereignty? May we expect more? Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan, for your comments and willingness to come forward. Um, and if you'll just make sure you get, you put your hand down because we're just counting how many people still would, would like to speak. I see that Amanda Weymeyer is next, or Waymeyer. And uh, we'll spotlight Amanda. Go right ahead. We'll start the timer. Go right ahead.
Hi, um, I am not a faculty of MJC. I am a student though. And I got vaccinated. My first dose was in December, second dose was three weeks later. And I would love to go back to campus. I feel that the vaccine mandate that is spelled out is perfectly reasonable. It's either get the vaccine and if you are unable to get the vaccine or choose not to get the vaccine to undergo testing. It's an invasive test. It's one little swab up your nose, quick four or five second test and you're done. I feel I would be much safer knowing that my teachers and my fellow students were vaccinated and wearing masks. I think that's very important that we do our best to try to get this pandemic under control. And I think even though the Cal State system, the UC system and a bunch of other community colleges have already implemented a vaccine mandate, I think it'd be wise for the YCCD Board to also impose a vaccine mandate or testing requirement to be on campus. Um, when Modesto City Schools went back to campus, they had two hundred and twenty-seven cases of children and/or faculty get the virus in one week. That was just one week's time. They had two hundred and twenty-seven cases. So I think a vaccine mandate is very much needed to return safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, for your comment and willingness to come speak to us. We'll move now to Krista Bartels. Uh, so this way we can alternate. Krista, welcome. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Start the timer.
Hi, uh, my name is Krista Bartels. I am a classified employee at Columbia College. Um, I had a whole uh, speech planned, something that I was going to say. Um, but it's a repeat of many of the things that other um, employees have already said. The question that I want to bring is weekly testing. Who is going to pay for students to get tested weekly? If you're not displaying symptoms of COVID, you cannot be tested at a testing facility. You must pay to be tested. Are we planning to offer this testing on campus for free to our students who cannot be vaccinated for COVID? Is there going to be a COVID monitor at the entrance of the school, um, checking vaccination cards or um, testing? I think we're doing a disservice to our students by um, forcing uh, testing or vaccination. I'm sorry, I'm cutting out. I apologize.
Uh, thank you, Krista. Thank you for your willingness to come speak to the board. Uh, we'll move now to Brian Green.
Hello, thank you.
Welcome, Brian. We'll, we'll start the timer.
Do you okay? Go. Um, thank you, Madam Chair and the rest of the board. I'm Brian Green, the Columbia College librarian. I support the proposed testing or vaccination mandate. And I'd like to urge the board to focus on the testing portion of the proposal. If implemented properly, weekly testing seems like a low bar to create a safer campus. With that goal in mind, hopefully adopting such a rule could be coupled with a more robust return to campus. Lastly, I just wanted to quickly respond to a criticism that this proposal is a form of discrimination. I think that argument is overstated. Public schools have had vaccine mandates for decades and few argue that was discrimination. If I walk into a restaurant and can't sit at the bar because I have a child with me, that's not discrimination. It's simply a reasonable rule that's been put in place that we all recognize needs to be followed. In short, a testing or vaccination requirement is a prudent step and I hope the board gives it serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for your comments. We appreciate it. Uh, moving now to Ally Bradley. Ally, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, welcome. We'll, we'll reset this timer, just a moment. And, and we'll start it again. Go right ahead.
I'm a student at Columbia College mainly, um, with a class at MJC. Um, who really struggles with online learning. And so being able to be back in the classroom this semester, though it may be only one or two classes, greatly improves a lot of things. Um, but then there's the issue of feeling safe in the classroom. Yes, we have mask mandates, but not all students wear masks correctly. If we have vaccine mandates or testing mandates, there's a more, there's a higher level of protection for students who feel unsafe. Um, vaccines aren't a hundred percent. We all know this, but even with that, they're mainly ninety-five percent effective. Um, and weekly testing, you can get tested without having symptoms. I got tested last week without symptoms. And those testing sites in the counties are free, no matter what. Um, another thing I'd like to bring up is we've been mandating vaccines for a long time. To get into kindergarten, you have to show proof of your polio vaccine or your smallpox vaccine. And that's been a thing of, that's sorry, that's been a thing that's been um, required for a long time and people accept that. So what's one extra layer? Um, I live with my grandparents who are at higher risk for complications related to COVID. I'm a nanny who works with children who are unable to be vaccinated. So being back in the classroom, as much as I enjoy it, it comes down to keeping people around me safe. If we have weekly testing for those who are not vaccinated or a vaccine mandate, that adds an extra level of protection. Um, and as has been stated, most community colleges already require vaccines or testing. So what makes us different? Um, UCs and CSUs have mandated it for a while now. Um, as a student, I just want to feel safe coming to campus and um, engaging with my professors and my fellow students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ally, for coming to speak to us. We appreciate it. We'll move, uh, just to acknowledge that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight speakers left so far. And two of them have not identified or, yeah, two, no, yeah, two have not identified their position. So we ask you to do that. So let's go to Catherine Tortell. Catherine, are you there? Oh, welcome. Welcome. Just unmute yourself. There you go. Hi, we'll start the timer.
Thank you. The following comments reflect the thoughts of Lynette Borelli Dliedwell from the MJC Department of Theater, Kim Davis from the MJC Department of Dance and myself, Catherine Tortell, MJC Department of Music. As faculty of theater, dance and music departments, we strongly support a vaccine mandate for all students and instructors by November first, two thousand and twenty-one. This would bring us into a necessary alignment with Delta Community College, the Los Rios Community College District, including American River, Cosumnes River, Folsom Lake and Sacramento City College. As we prepare our students to be transfer, uh, transfer ready to a California State University or UC campus, including Stan State and UC Merced, one of the requirements is that they are fully vaccinated in order to enter the university. Further, the MJC Performing Arts Program needs to align with our local community performing organization, including the Gallo Center for the Arts, Prospect Theater and Sierra Repertoire, who are following the vaccine protocols as practiced by Broadway Musical Guild, AGMA. AGMA, SAG, AFTRA, Harlem Dance, and all other professional performing organizations. In March of 2020, our 40 cast member ensemble and 16 professional community musicians were forced to shut down 10 days before opening night. This had a profound effect on both morale and production costs. We must avoid this in the future and recognize the vital priority of health and safety in order to preserve our academic programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine, for your time. We appreciate you coming. We'll move now to Michael Akard. He recently joined. Let's just try and take this so that we're alternating. Go ahead, Michael. Are you there?
I'm here, yes.
Welcome. I can't see you yet. There you are. Welcome. Go ahead. We'll start the timer.
Okay. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for arranging this discussion. Good evening, all. As I listened to the presentations this evening, I noticed an elephant in the room. Many people are addressing the pros and cons of the shot and its efficacy. But almost nobody is addressing the word mandate, which I think is crucial here. In the United States, we make decisions by discussion, by debate, by weighing the advantages and disadvantages. And then we make each person responsible to make his or her own decision about how to be safe. If the case for getting the shot is strong, people will make the decision to get it. Everyone wants to be safe. And if people think this is a good idea to protect their own safety or to protect public safety, they will get it. No problem. In the United States of America, we do not rule by mandate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Michael. Appreciate your time. Well, we'll move now to Lobs. Are you there, Lana?
Yes, I am. I am here. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me. I wear a lot of hats at Columbia College. My first hat is as Academic Senate President. And as reported to the board in my last report, nearly 80% of Columbia faculty surveyed requested that the Board of Trustees support testing or vaccination. Testing being the main option, we need clear advertising to make sure no one thinks we're forcing them to get vaccinated. Exemption from testing for immunity either by vaccination or natural immunity as advised by CDC guidelines. We need to make sure we're staying home if we're sick and keep in robust online options. Those on our campus that are highly exposed are getting tested every three days without any adverse side effects from the test. The other hat I wear is I'm a statistics teacher. I've studied the the numbers between vaccinated and unvaccinated groups. And it shows strong evidence, amazingly strong evidence, that even with other lurking variables not controlled for, vaccines work to vastly reduce symptoms and incidences of death. And I'm willing to bet that reducing death is a good thing for everyone. Being in class means in class safely. Just saying, well, let's just have students come to class. We're just going to accept that a certain number of them are going to become sick with a novel virus that has possible long-term effects is not acceptable. Doing nothing is not ethical or supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion. As a community member, I love my community. We need to reduce the load of our hospitals. Our nurses are tired. Hospitals have high numbers of unvaccinated sick people, very, very low numbers of vaccinated sick people and not any incidents reported of any kind of vaccine injury. So these vaccines aren't going to fix everything. They're not the silver bullet, but it's by far, by far, by far, the best tool we have. The vaccine is well-studied. It's not new. And we need to model to our community, what is the safe course of action? So with all of those hats, I request that the Board of Trustees agendize the item for the October meeting and vote to require testing with exemptions for vaccination and natural immunity on your next board meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lana, for taking the time to address us. We appreciate it. We'll move now to Lawrence Shegg. While this person hasn't identified themselves, let's please hear from Lawrence Shegg. Greetings. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll start the timer.
I'm actually a con. I wasn't too savvy on changing that. Well, I want to remind everybody, this is an experimental vaccine. This is not your typical vaccine. And maybe we shouldn't even be calling it a vaccine, but that's something we can debate another time. There's a lot of cause and effect on this, and it's cause and effect is something that's very hard to prove. Statistics are very hard to prove, and statistics are a good way to manipulate numbers. We want to keep that in mind. I'm going to go to the vaccine adverse events reporting system and just read the government data up to this point a couple of weeks ago. The deaths in the United States are 14,925. This is from the vaccine. Okay, anaphylactic shock around 8,000. Hospitalizations over 60,000. Bell palsy over 8,000. Urgent care over 80,000. 701,559 adverse effects reported to that date because of the vaccine. Life-threatening events, 15,000. Heart attacks over 6,000, almost 7,000. Myocarditis, almost 6,000. Miscarriages, almost 2,000. Allergic reactions, 28,000 plus. Disabled, whatever that means, nine, over 19,000. Shingles, over 8,000. A really long word that I probably take a long time to pronounce. I think it has something to do with the heart, three thousand, over 3,000. And kids, zero to 18 injuries, 25,000. Kids, zero to 16, 32 deaths. That's from the vaccine adverse reporting system, a government reporting system. So whether we're for the vaccine or not, I encourage everybody to go look at that. In Europe, reported today, 25,000 deaths, over two and a half million injuries on their reporting system. And in closing, I would just like a little bit more explanation of what the religious exemptions would be. I know you mentioned that at the beginning of your meeting tonight. And I I would really like more information on that. I'm sure everybody that's watching this would like more information on that as well. I thank you for your time. And I really am grateful that the board gave us this opportunity to express ourselves and that they reached out to the students. I was very impressed by that.
Lauren, thank you so much for taking the time. Unfortunately, the board can't enter a discussion with you to answer your question. I urge you to go to the internet to look that up in the meantime. Thank you again. We'll move now to Rosalinda Viera. Hi, welcome, Rosalinda. We'll start the timer.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Rose. I'm actually an MJC classified staff. I'm also alumni. I attended MJC myself. And I'm also a parent of an MJC student. Actually, this is my third student, I believe, at MJC. My son is immune compromised. My mother has lymphoma. So the risks are valid. I work in the Pathway Center, so I'm working directly with students with no barriers. But I am vaccinated. But I want to bring just my attention. I do support the choice. I think that's my biggest decision. I do think everyone should make their own choice. Which is why my family has decided personally to make their vaccination. We got ourselves vaccinated. But my son was recently sick. He missed seven days from school because of allergies. And he struggled getting all his homework made up when he returned back to the high school. And I know if a staff member or one of our instructors gets sick, we're going to run into that same problem. What what are we doing for the students? Those are the ones that are directly affected by this. So I do support, at least if they don't want to get tested or getting vaccinated, they get tested. I go in, even though I'm vaccinated, I go in and get tested weekly anyways. I know it's free on campus. I walk over to the men's locker or the classroom and get tested every week. It's easy. It takes less than five minutes. My daughter is a second grade teacher or a paraprofessional through the credential program at Stan State, which just recently mandated the vaccines. She's already caught COVID twice this year. When she caught it right after graduation ceremony at the elementary school, she actually ended up in the hospital and infected her kidneys. She ended missing school both times in the classroom with the students, which are the ones that she's affected. She works with disability students and autistic non-verbal classrooms. And those are the ones that were affected by her not being vaccinated. So she made the choice, but she made the choice. So I think at this point in time, I just want us to think about the students and the staff. I don't think we should mandate it, but I do think that we need to have something in place because I worked directly with the students in the pathway centers. There's no barriers. There's no plexiglass. There's nothing but masks. And even then, a lot of the students will take the masks off. We've had some strange coughs. We've had students even tell us I should be quarantined, but I need to get registered for classes. And it's scary. It's scary for me every single day when I go to work and I'm engaging with these students. But I'm there because I know they need an education just as much as I did when I was their age. But I do think we should do something. I do get tested and I'm vaccinated. And I thank you again for listening and taking ours into consideration.
Rosalinda, thank you so much for coming to the board and speaking. Just so I can do some housekeeping, it looks as though, I could be wrong, did not Dr. Aaron Lucas already speak and Dr. Alejandro Sabe? They have their hands up.
Yes, they did.
Okay, so we'll lower those hands. And it looks like we have two more speakers. I'll go next to Kelly Butler. Greetings, Kelly. Go right ahead. We'll start the timer.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would just like to add to the pro category. I am in support of a COVID requirement or testing. It seems like it's the best of both worlds for people who are willing to get the vaccine, get the vaccine. To get it, to test. I absolutely believe in choices for medical procedures, medication, vaccines. But it is a public health crisis that we are facing. As a registered nurse and the director of the ADN program, we are witnessing the exhaustion in the physicians, in the nurses, in the respiratory therapists. And we are going to have a problem on our hands where we don't have enough healthcare providers, frontline workers, because many have experienced COVID. Many have died. Many of the people who are in the hospital who they are caring for are unvaccinated. And I suppose we can get into the debate of whether it's your choice or whether it's your right to protect your community and the public. The environment that we teach for students, but it also has to be safe for the faculty members who are there. Having the people having the opportunity for students to continue their education can't happen without the faculty members there. So having the faculty members still safe is really, really important. The vaccines are, the Pfizer vaccine is FDA approved. It is no longer experimental. And we anticipate that the other vaccines are going to be FDA approved as well. Again, not forcing anyone to get the vaccine. If you do not get the vaccine, it seems prudent that you would then at least test. Many people have said once a week, the hospitals are requiring that students who are not vaccinated be tested twice a week. So I really think it's our right to protect the public, to protect each other. And thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, for coming to speak to the board. We appreciate it. I'm going to go next to Patrick Krebs. Patrick, are you there? Welcome, welcome. We'll start the timer now.
I am con. I am personally vaccinated. I am not anti-vaccine, but I am against mandate. Many people have said pros, cons. They have great points both ways. My suggestion to the board, I don't envy your guys' position and having to make this choice. My thing is, though, if you are going to mandate testing for students, staff, et cetera, maybe just double check that we have the capacity for testing. Because I've had to have tested. My wife had to have testing, finding tests, at home tests, finding urgent cares to test. Kaiser had a three-day week, just a three-day waiting period for to do testing. Just about two weeks ago. It comes and goes, coming up with cold and flu season. I'm sure the testing capacity is going to be diminished because everyone's going to have symptoms. So how is that going to affect both students and staff if they have to wait several days to be tested? And if they have to be tested multiple times a week or once a week, that could impact their ability to go to school or to work. Just something to, I guess, consider. And take care. Thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you, Patrick. We appreciate you coming to speak to the board. We'll go next to Alex Duarte. Alexa, sorry, Alexa, go ahead. You're, we'll start the timer.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Alexa Duarte, and I'm currently a student at both MJC and Columbia. I support the implementation of vaccines or weekly tests for students and staff. As someone who comes home, who comes from a home with a parent currently undergoing cancer treatment, I greatly fear bringing home the virus to my parent, who would likely die if infected. I know the vaccine does not stop you from getting infected, but it does decrease transmission rates. Having staff and students get vaccinated would make me feel safer being on campus and taking classes in person. I am sure there are many students that are my physician, and it would feel more comfortable if the vaccine or weekly test was implemented. I understand that all students and staff are comfortable with the vaccine, but this would not force students to get the vaccine. Getting tested weekly would also ensure that people on campus are safe. I know some may say that the likelihood of dying infected with the virus, especially for younger people, is low. But as someone who has recently lost an unvaccinated friend who is only 24 years old, that loss was more than enough. I would not want to lose any other friends or classmates. My former school, UC Berkeley, who has thousands of students, has implemented the vaccine mandate, and it has worked for them. So why would it not work here? I also want to state again, as another student has said, some students on campus don't wear their mask correctly. So a vaccine mandate or a weekly testing would also make me feel safer. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope this institution is able to implement vaccine or weekly testing requirements.
Thank you, Alexa, for your comments. We appreciate it. We'll move now to Christian. Welcome, Christian. We'll start the timer. Christian Cavallho.
It's Cavallho. Yeah, thank you. So I did thank the board for having this conversation. And while my identifier may say con, I would like to emphasize that there exists plenty of nuance within these two, I guess, extremes, that we can't simply group the staff, whether they are pro or whether they are con. With that being said, I believe a more important conversation, regardless of the decision that the board makes, is that the board communicate transparently to its constituents about a set plan with the logistics of that final decision. With breakthrough cases of COVID on the rise, is it statistically and scientifically sane not to require those who are vaccinated to also test on a regular basis? Whether that be weekly or biweekly, that's a question that should be, that should be asked, excuse me. The logistics of having staff and faculty being tested or vaccinated is the easy part. Has the board had the conversation of the logistics required for testing the 20,000-plus students on MJC campus alone to return to class? I also would like to add that CSEA has already experienced a rushed repopulation of campus. Will we experience another rushed student return to campus? Thank you.
Thank you, Christian, for your comments. We appreciate it. We have one more speaker identified, and that is Tina Acres Porter. Welcome, Tina.
Thank you. Hello. Board Chair Vulcan, if it is allowed, I would like to cede my time to Dr. Aaron Lucas. Is that allowed?
No, you mean to give your time to someone who's already spoken? No. You're, if you would like to speak, we are giving you that opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for asking.
Yes. So I want, I just want to address some incorrect immunity descriptors. The statement, what that was heard was people who have had the virus have natural immunity that is better than vaccines or something to that effect this evening, as we've heard comments. It is true that some people that are infected with SARS-CoV-2 will mount a good immune response that is adequate to protect them from future infections. Some do not, though. Up to 30% of infected individuals do not mount an adequate immune response that would be needed to protect them from future that would be needed to protect them from future infections. They are still unprotected. Until we have a good, cheap, easy test to figure out who has robust antibody and cellular response and who has not, it is false to say that natural immunity is good enough. Also heard was that this was an experimental vaccine. It is not. The experiments are done. The FDA has granted full approval. Also heard was a misreporting of theirs. The adverse reaction reporting system, that is a reporting system, not assigning causality. When adverse reactions are reported, there is an investigating body that then go and determine if the event was caused by the vaccine. The actual events are quite minor, not zero, of course. There is no such thing as a 100% safe vaccine. There is no such thing as 100% of anything in life science, ever. That being said, these vaccines will go down in history as some of the most efficacious and safe vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina, for your comment. We appreciate it. I seeing no further hands raised or from the public indicating that they wish to speak, that concludes Section 3.2 of our agenda. Moving on now to Section 4, which is 4.1. Announcements and adjournments. The next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on October 20th, 2021. Close session will begin at 3:00 PM and open session at 5:30 PM in the Manzanita Conference Room at Columbia College, 11600 Columbia College Drive, Sonora, California. And with that, this meeting is adjourned at 6:53.